We got somebody, we got somebody knows what they're doing here.
Okay.
Okay. Call the meeting of the county committee of the whole today at nine o'clock. Rosemary is meeting remotely, so we will call role.
Commissioner Hoag.
Here.
Commissioner Barrows.
Here.
Commissioner Lubke.
Here.
Commissioner Coring.
Here.
Commissioner Franzine.
Here.
Okay.
The members are present.
Okay, thank you. First thing on the agenda is the state facility DNMC update with Tammy Lewick and Mike Willey.
Good morning.
Take it over.
Thank you for having us. Teresa, can we put up the summary sheet first? So, this has been something that you have seen from me several times. I didn't do all the additional kind of charts this, today or this morning. And that's what my plan will be is I'm going to bring those when I, I think I'll be coming back in March. And I'll do kind of a review of the whole year because I think it always looks a little funny when we're only nine months into the year. So. So, just a couple of things to note. State facility costs include the cost of care. For those at the AMRTC, after thirty days, we pay twenty percent of their cost of care. Those under commitment that no longer meet medical criteria at either the AMRTC or the CBHH. That's any CBHH across Minnesota, the DNMS, that's DNMC what we reference. Then there's the mentally ill and dangerous, and then there's the sexually, sexually dangerous, and those we just pay a percentage of the cost, ten percent, I believe. So, a couple of things to note, as of August first, the daily rate at Anoka and the CBHH have increased. Anoka went up to two thousand one oh six. This was a nineteen percent increase from twenty twenty-two rates. And the CBHH increased by eight percent. You see that there at eighteen eighteen.
I do have a question.
Yep.
I don't know if you know the answer. I guess it's just, how can it cost two thousand one hundred and six dollars a day for a person? That doesn't even make any sense.
Yeah. So, it's the, it's the hospital level of care is how they look at it. So there, and that rate has been steadily increasing at the AMRTC. They're saying that this is getting closer to what their actual costs are. And, yeah, it's very expensive.
That's what we're up against. To send somebody down there and we're, by law, we have to, and pay the state that amount of money? It's insane. Anyway.
By Mike, you know, the one cost factor that, well, you have DHS operations to start with, that's part of that number. But you look at a psychiatrist and what they get paid to be on staff is.
But even if it was five hundred dollars an hour, even if it was five hundred dollars an hour.
Thousand dollars a year, just for a psychiatrist. Then you have psychologists and you have behavior analysts and you have.
Nursing.
Social workers, and then you have your direct care staff, the ones that are out there on the floor, maintaining order out there. It's, it's a, it's not hard to get to this number, I'll tell you.
I don't know, but just working too cheap.
If I could throw my two cents in that.
Yeah, why don't you give me four or five cents?
I don't know that I got that much. So, I'm Mike Willey. I'm the regional transition specialist with Sourcewell, and so I work a lot with the state facilities. That's kind of my primary role. And we can talk a little bit about that as I dig into my presentation. But directly to your point, I think a big factor is the acuity of care of the individuals who end up in the state psychiatric hospitals. So, we do have community psychiatric hospitals across the state and their rates are not that. They do not get reimbursed at that rate, is my understanding. But part of why we have the state system, and at this point, I believe it's like two hundred and forty beds in the state. For, for six million people in Minnesota, we have that small number of beds. And so they only take the people with the very, very highest needs, the people that the community placements have said they can't handle for the rates that the government provides. And so, you know, we're, we're working with situations where there are some people who need two to one, three to one, four to one staffing, actively, acutely mentally ill and in danger of hurting themselves and other people. And so, there's really, really high needs for the individuals who make it in that level. And we'll talk a little bit about that, too. But I think that can't be understated in how much that factors into the cost. You know, that, that's a big part of it.
So, the other thing that happened, though, during the legislative session was that effective July first, legislation enacted a two-year exemption for counties to be responsible for DNMC days for those that are committed mentally ill and dangerous. There's been a really, there's been this backlog that's been occurring for those that should be going on to forensics at St. Peter. And they are at the AMRTC. They do not meet level of care at the AMRTC. Or if they hit that, then we start being billed at that two thousand dollars a day. And yet, we have no ability to move them because a mentally ill and dangerous individual can't return to the community. So, Mike doing the transition specialist work, there's nothing he can assist and help us with to get that individual out, back out to the community. Because they really are to go on to St. Peter to the forensic services. They're under that court order and they, they are not able to be released to the community.
So then, a question. So then, is that on, on people's property taxes? I mean, is that levy dollars or?
This is, yes.
It is?
The DNMCs are. So, they gave, so legislation enacted a two-year exemption for counties. So, we don't, we are not responsible for that for the next two years while this group researches this, this high admissions group. And, and they are now meeting. So, we're hopeful that that will continue to be the, that that will actually be the rule, that we won't be charged for individuals that we really can't bring back out into the community and that do have to go on to St. Peter.
Tammy, are we charged for people who do meet medical criteria?
Yes.
And what's that rate, twenty percent?
Twenty percent if, yeah, twenty percent cost of care. And it's a little bit dependent on the type of insurance they have, but yeah. So if they're.
Is that where the forty-eight hour rule got also suspended?
It's in that exemption, yeah. That's part of it because those are some of the, the pieces that are clogging the system.
So, the standard to get somebody a state bed, and if I understand correctly, Minnesota has the second lowest total among all states of state-run mental health beds. So, in order to wait for that state bed for someone sitting in our jail, there's no bed. And instead of trying to add a bed.
Yeah.
We eliminated the requirement.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep. My understanding from the work group is.
That's correct.
It's kind of the first time that there's, we're starting to hear Commissioner Harpstead and Attorney General Keith Ellison. You know, they're just, that they're starting to see, they did a presentation on how many beds that we've lost since twenty thirteen. I don't have those numbers with me today, but just, you know, we, we closed some of the CBHHs or we converted them into ERTS facilities. And so, we can, have continued to reduce these beds and, which is really, like I said, clogging. So, people are at the AMRTC at Anoka awaiting St. Peter, and we need more, we really just need, we do need more beds that, for this high level, this high, this high acuity of care.
There's really no lack of a bed, is there?
Yeah.
There's somewhere for them to sleep, isn't there? There's somewhere where they're housed, isn't there? It's just a jail.
Yeah.
Instead of a mental health facility.
So, Tammy, how many do we have in Coring County right now in that program? And how many do we have maybe waiting, waiting in the jail to go into that program? Do you know?
Currently, I'm not aware that we have anyone. Last year, we had a number of individuals that were waiting in the jail. I'm not aware of anybody right now. I would say, I give a lot of credit to Anna Anderson, our social worker that we put over in the jail. She's been working really hard to move people sometimes to what Mike talked about, a community hospital. So, I know like over the weekend, she was able to get an individual moved to Prairie St. John's. So, to get the services they need instead of sitting in the jail. But do we have people waiting in the jail at times? Yes, for sure.
Tammy, I want to just say one other thing, and I'll stop interrupting you, but I just want to point out the fact that this is scary. Because if by chance, we had somebody that was in there for three hundred and sixty-five days at twenty-one hundred dollars, that would be seven hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. And every one percent of our levy is four hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's almost two percent of our levy.
For one person.
For one person.
Yeah.
Did you not say, though, we're exempt at this point for two years or?
Just for the mentally ill and dangerous.
Not for this?
Not all commitments. So.
Okay.
So, this year so far, we've had six individuals that met but did not meet criteria. And none of them were that mentally ill and dangerous individuals. So, it was, and we've requested, so you can request an administrative review with the state for individuals that we feel where the state may be prolonging the discharge. So, when Mike is working on, with the case managers on the discharge planning, he is keeping really good notes and, you know, and tabs on those situations. So, we've requested reviews for three individuals. We requested twenty-nine days and we were awarded thirteen. So, we haven't been a hundred percent successful at that, but we have been able to get the state to acknowledge that they did potentially prolong the discharge due to some, you know, various reasons. Sometimes it's people being out of the office. Sometimes it's a Friday afternoon and they're trying to say that, well, we can't move them. Well, most, a lot of people can get released from a hospital on a weekend, but not in the state system. That doesn't work like that. So, usually, we have to wait till like Monday or Tuesday or something like that. So, we, we were able to get twenty-two thousand or eighty dollars back. We'll continue to do that as we have DNMCs. Right now, we're at sixty-two percent of budget. So, I, Commissioner Coring, I definitely hear you and I recognize what you're saying in regards to, I know I have always said, one month is close to, you know, it's around forty thousand dollars. So, it, it's, it's, when it happens, it's like, oh, my gosh, what are we doing? And, you know, what options do we have? And some of these individuals, as Mike mentioned, are, can be very, very difficult to place in community settings. And there are some barriers and limitations even with that, you know. Doing a development for an individual can be, takes time. And so, if, if we have to develop something for somebody, that, that isn't always something that we can stand up very quickly. Okay, so what we, I asked Mike to come because Mike presented to the, to MACSA, to the Minnesota Association of Social Service Administrators last month in Duluth. And so, I asked him if he would just come and share. He's going to go through it quickly because you know some things about his role. But, you know, we created this role through our Adult Mental Health Initiative and an innovation grant from DHS initially about, back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Correct, twenty eighteen, yeah.
Yep. So, I just thought he would, should share. He's been very helpful. You know, we were well over a million dollars in this cost back in, I think, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and we've been able to reduce that significantly. So, go ahead. Oh, you want me to click?
Excellent. That's me, my history and my family. My, my kids are really excited. They say they're famous now. So, I was with.
Excuse me, one, one second. When we got it, you weren't even in the picture, just your wife. Cut out of it.
That's actually a better choice. I'm glad they did that.
But your son got out of there, too. So, that's not.
Oh, that's a.
That's not fair.
Yeah, dang, okay. So, I was with the county system for my career, prior to coming to Sourcewell and filling this position. I was with Hubbard County for a while. And then I transitioned to Wadena County and I was there for a while. I was a supervisor for my last nine years in Wadena County before I transitioned in this role. And I've been so happy to get to serve the region. I served the entire region plus Aiken County. So, we call it Region Five Plus. And that's our AMHI, the Adult Mental Health Initiative, and that includes Aiken County as well. So, as far as goals for my role, our original primary goal was to reduce DNMC costs because that was such a significant burden on the counties in our region and had a significant impact. And so, we knew that we wanted to get a handle on that. And so, we, we worked hard to develop the role. We worked in conjunction with Sourcewell and the AMHI to define what the role is going to look like, what duties we would have within it, and then we moved out from there. Since that time, we've added some additional goals. We always knew that we'd be assisting case managers, and I don't know that we knew the, the role of being a liaison with DCNT, Direct Care and Treatment, which is our state hospitals run by DHS. I don't know that we knew that that would carry such a significant role, but that's been really beneficial to have that kind of single contact point within the region. A lot of our counties don't do as many commitments, and so when they do get involved with the state hospitals, maybe they haven't worked with that place in a year or two, and maybe that worker has not worked with that facility ever. Whereas, I work with almost all the facilities pretty regularly. And so, it's nice to have that contact point, have a little bit of additional knowledge about kind of how that system operates on a very ground level. Of course, you know, we, we have high-quality staff and individuals that we're working with, and so they know how it, you know, works for the law and for the statute and all those things. But, you know, things always transition when you get to the ground and how it actually plays out. And having that little bit of experiential knowledge can sometimes make a big difference. And then I also serve as liaison with our placement providers, and I help facilitate AMH case manager networking and meetings. I do that. Every other month, I provide an opportunity for our AMH case managers who have a very difficult job in our region, serving folks with mental health needs and a very rewarding job as well. I give them an opportunity to get together, talk about how they do their work, what they're seeing in other counties and, and some opportunities that they have for growth. We also do some trainings associated with that.
Turn.
Want to talk about reducing DNMC days really quick. The DNMC is, does not meet criteria. That's where that dollar amount comes in, in that. And we take a multi-pronged approach. I do not pretend that it is just my work that does that. All of the counties have done significant amount of work.
Mike, maybe for, you know, there's, there is people that, that look at these tapes. So, DNMC, can you just, what's that acronym?
Yeah, thank you. Does not meet criteria.
Does not meet criteria. That's a great acronym.
So, when a person is in the hospital and the doctor has determined, this person doesn't need to be here anymore.
Okay.
That's when they say that that person is DNMC, and that's when they start charging that cost.
That's how it is when you lose an election, too. Don't need you anymore.
You don't need to be here.
I've had that happen a couple of times.
You know, the, the big thing that I want to say about that is all of the counties have made concerted efforts. There, there are meetings that the counties have put in place to make sure that they're getting the right people in the right room together to talk about these situations. It's not just the position, the position is, of course, kind of front and center with that. You have an impact on the things you pay attention to. And a big part of my role is paying attention to these things, putting work in on them. So, but I, I don't want to pretend that it's just me. And then, you know, a, a big part of it is also, we get a lot of referrals out. We want to make sure that when a person is ready to go, they've got a place that they can go to. And if we're really lucky and we've done our job well, they have a choice, and that's always key. We wanted to make sure that people are served in the best way possible, because if we just find a bed for somebody, that's not going to end well. These are people that have high needs. We talked before about, you know, individuals who are served in the state psychiatric hospitals are kind of high acuity. And when they transition out, that doesn't mean that that acuity has decreased to nothing. So, still, we have high needs where people are re-entering the community, and we want to make sure that they are served in the best way possible. And so, finding that right fit is, is really important to us as well, finding that place that's good for the person. Assisting case managers, we've touched on a little bit, but helping the case managers out. We'll keep moving here. And then we've talked a little bit about serving as liaison with DCNT and our placement providers. Again, DCNT is Direct Care and Treatment. That's our state psychiatric hospitals, our state substance use disorder treatment facilities. There are three inpatient mental health residential facilities in the state. They call them ERTSs, intensive residential treatment setting. We love acronyms, don't we? And so, there are three of those in the state, and all of those are under the umbrella of Direct Care and Treatment. And so, we work with any of those organizations.
I think, as Mike mentioned, this is where he really can, you know, he has formed relationships with the social workers at the CBHH and providers. And, you know, that's not something each of our case managers potentially always get an opportunity to do where he is in, he's in a lot of contact with them. And so, he kind of knows how each CBHH operates, how the AMRTC is going to be, which, you know, depending on what floor they're on or unit. So, this has been a really key. They also, we've had positive feedback from Direct Care and Treatment in regards to Mike's role. They also like that they kind of know who their point person is in our region.
Yeah. Liaison with placement providers, we work and the goal, I think, has always been for placement providers to see me as a central contact in the region. So that if they have an open bed, they reach out. They say, hey, do you have anybody that would fill this? And maybe I do, maybe I don't. But having that central contact point, I think, has been a big benefit to the region as well. Also, knowing a little bit how their procedures work, when I get them a referral, it has all the things that they need, which strings lines the process, makes it all a little bit easier. And then AMH case manager networking. We've talked a little bit about the networking meetings that I facilitate. You know, I, I work with all the case managers across the region, and so having a central contact point makes that facilitation of that meeting a little bit easier. We can do some trainings with it.
This also, I mean, it assists us with training for staff across the region, but it also forms a relationship with Mike so that they feel like they know who he is when they're making these referrals to him. So, we found that to be beneficial as well.
Results. This is, this is why you bought the ticket. We'll write to you. So, let's go to the next slide. Yes, please. So, cost savings for Region Five. So, this is based on DHS data. DHS gives us information about the does not meet criteria stats that are issued every year. I don't know if you can read that, but in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we don't have twenty seventeen, which is when DNMC first started. And I don't know what that looks like. I, I would suspect, based on historical numbers that I've seen, that it would be similar to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, maybe even higher, because that's before the, the position here was created. But we started tracking in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and it was about a million dollars a year between those two years. Please keep in mind, that's not adjusted for inflation. So, the number of days that people had to stay in the hospital was, was pretty high. And then we've seen some pretty nice decreases through twenty twenty on down to, last year, we were just below two hundred and fifty thousand for the entire region, which I think was a significant decrease. We're very happy with that. You know, we'd always like to see that down to zero. But there are always challenges with discharge with, with a really high needs population, and I don't want to minimize that. The other thing that I want to say about this slide is each of these numbers tracks to a, a person, a real-life individual who had to stay in the hospital longer than they needed to, that wasn't able to get back out in the community, that wasn't able to reintegrate in whatever way was appropriate for that individual because something was holding that up. And that's always something we have in mind when we're serving these folks, is that, you know, if, if there can be a way that somebody can reintegrate into the community safely, that's really what we want to do as quickly as possible. And the fact that it saves us money is a great thing, too. So, I don't want to lose sight of that.
And I just want to point out on the sheet that I brought, that that state facility total cost of care, and then I have it broken down. So, this is just the does not meet criteria for the region.
Okay.
So, just keeping that in mind because it might be a little confusing, but I'm giving you a full overview because we do have those additional costs that we do pay to state-operated.
Correct. Good point. Thank you, Tammy. So, I've got a few quotes from our AMH case managers on where they're seeing the value of the position. You know, kind of themes that, when we can kind of roll through these themes that we've identified are, they really see the coordination and the ability to consult as being beneficial. Obviously, having another set of hands who can be efficient and rip off a lot of these referrals helps them a lot. You know, there's, there's certainly a very practical side to my job, along with all the touchy, social-worky, fluffy stuff that I do. That's, you know, getting a lot of paperwork out to the, the folks who need to see the paperwork so that we can get people placed. And having somebody to do that, I do it a lot, so that helps with efficiency. I get to specialize. And so, doing that has been a benefit to the case managers. Also, having somebody to consult, having somebody who sees the system, like I said before, on that practical level, and we can talk through what can work for an individual. When we get into commitment, there are some things that aren't always utilized. A, a simple example of this is an individual who's in a state facility on a commitment can be transferred to another state facility under that same commitment, or they can be provisionally discharged to another state facility under that commitment. Those two things can seem interchangeable if you don't work with them a lot, and they might not even be something that come on people's radar. But that difference can make a, a significant impact on the individual served and on kind of the trajectory of their case when we use it appropriately. And so, knowing when to use which level is something that we consult with. And, you know, I think if you do a couple of commitments a year, it's, it's hard to build that kind of experiential base to know what works when. So, we can consult on that and talk about what's going to work best for that individual. So, placement success, we talked a little bit about this, but matching placement with individual clients served is, is the big one. We try very hard to get people in a place that's going to have the best impact for them and, and really get them to their end goal. Whenever I work with folks, I always tell them, you have to set the end goal. I, I can't do that. I don't know where you want to go. Because of our process, we have to be a part of developing the roadmap for how you get there. And we're certainly going to have some, some experience with that. We have some knowledge that can be beneficial to folks in that. But they're the only ones who can set the end destination. If I set it, it sure as heck isn't going to work. So, we really want to find a place that works for the individuals served. We talked a little bit about relationships built with our partners, in particular, the state Direct Care and Treatment staff. There was a report to the legislature that was asked of DHS earlier this year. DHS was asked to report to the legislature on DNMC days. In writing that report, the report writer interviewed staff at the DCNT facilities about what was having a beneficial impact on decreasing DNMC days. And one of the things that the social workers at the DCNT facilities called out was our position. They really felt like it was beneficial. I get calls from, not as much anymore, especially in the first few years, I'd get calls from those social workers saying, hey, do you work with anybody outside of Region Five? And I'd always have to say, no, I'm sorry. But we still, you know, share resources. I, I help them out if, if it's appropriate with like, if they're looking for a resource in our region. And then I can always call on them to look for resources in other regions. I think it's been a really beneficial partnership. And this is kind of what I see my job as. In mental health, there can be a lot of different ways we try to reach our goal. Everybody's got their own opinion. We all have different angles. But kind of having the, the knowledge of all the systems, having the experiential work in, in each of those places, having my, my feet on the ground in those places lets me help kind of get us moving in the same direction. Sometimes, I've seen situations where the hospital has said, we'd like this person to go here. But because of the nature of the resources in our state, that might be a really great idea, but it's not realistic for that individual. There, there's no way, based on their criminal history, based on their history in other facilities, there's no way that they would have access to the place that the hospital has said. And the hospital wouldn't know that. And so, that could easily be a head-butting situation. But because we've got relationships formed and we can have those discussions about, I can see where that would be beneficial, but that person probably can't access it. What else could we do that could try to get to the same result? So, trying to get everybody just kind of pushing in the same direction so that we can all kind of worry about the individual served.
Mike, I can see it looks like you enjoy what you're doing.
I do, very much.
And, and I'll come back to, I have, I'm new here. So, when this position was done, we pay a cost, the county pays a cost for Mike? And how is that allocated between the other counties? Or how does that work, Tammy?
It's paid through our Adult Mental Health Initiative, and so that's, those are dollars that come in from the state to the counties, and we share it regionally. So, that's how we're paying for the position. And Sourcewell also does fund a portion of the position as well.
How is it prorated then? Is it prorated over the counties or how does each of the other?
This position, excuse me, sorry. This position, we were prepared for that if our Adult Mental Health Initiative would not have been able to fund it. But we were, it, it was kind of at a time that we were able to, we hadn't stopped funding in some other areas, and we did put the dollars towards this. But with other positions that we have shared with the other counties in the region, we do a prorated based on population.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering if it's, you know, if Aiken doesn't hardly use it, are they paying a big share or is there a base fee? And then, then how many people are using it add on to the top of that? So.
So, right now, it's just paid through our Adult Mental Health Initiative grant or our dollars that we receive from the state. That's how we're paying our portion of the position. That's how all the counties are paying for it. So, we're not utilizing any levy dollars at this time for this position.
At this, at this time?
No.
And there is no, it sounds like it's a Sourcewell kind of thing. Is there any other people like you out there doing with other Region Fives and other regions in the state?
That's a good question. So, B-Cow, which is.
Another acronym.
Clay, Otter Tail and Wilkin Counties.
Okay.
Just recently hired somebody through Lake's Country Service Cooperative. Just recently hired somebody through Lake's Country Service Cooperative, which is a service cooperative similar to Sourcewell over there, over in their region. And so that person just started a couple months ago, and I've met with that person a couple of times and chatted about our role. My understanding is there may be somebody down Lake Blue Earth County?
Blue Earth, maybe, Olmsted area. They, they had something like this, but they do it a little different than we do, but.
Right.
And it sounds like the people, the clients, the patients are being served well by this versus what we were doing before.
We certainly try.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just full disclosure and for clarification for the other commissioners, you weren't hired away from Crowing County, were you?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that.
[laughing]
There's a background to that, Mike, that you
Sure.
Yeah, we went, we went to Sourcewell. So this, when we created this position, I mean, there was that, we, we talked through, like, does one of the counties hold the position? But we felt like the dedication then potentially might just be to that particular county and who was going to take it on. And so we did go to Sourcewell to see if they would agree to hold this position for us so that it could be regionally shared. And they did. And it's, I think it's worked really well, so.
And I think it's, to your point, I think it's been a great benefit to the region.
Yeah.
And Aiken County.
Yeah.
Throw them in there, too. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Coring, I do have a Sourcewell ink pen for you.
What it is, is Sourcewell keeps stealing, and our
Stealing, stealing.
And I, and I am troubled by that.
[laughing]
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the opportunity to serve your county.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Next, I think we have Kerry Griffin. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Cara. There's too many Caras, Caras, and I'm going to be in trouble now. You have to fanatically have your name on the badge, and then I'll be able to figure it out.
Or as they call her, Griffin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cara Griffin, manager with Community Services, joined by Krista, who is the manager for Corrections.
Good morning.
So we are here to provide an update on the out-of-home placement budget, as well as review our third quarter numbers. So this is one of the handouts that you should have available. Specific to Social Services, our point-in-time report reflects that we have 121 kids that are currently in care. So those numbers, as you notice, will have been trending pretty consistent throughout the year. We had 15 kids that entered care. One was due to their parents' mental health, 11 due to the parents' chemical use, and three due to their own mental health needs. We have no kids that are placed in out-of-state facilities. So last time we were here was in April of this year, and at that time, we had a youth that we were preparing to be placed in out-of-state. The youth was placed out-of-state. He was in the facility a few weeks and unsuccessfully discharged. They asked him to leave. He's the same youth that we've had in care for over four years. So he returned back to the state. He was in a hospital-type setting for 50 days. Then we got him into a state-operated hospital for six days. He's now sitting in detention. So.
Wow.
We had six kids that left care. Three adoptions were finalized, and three returned home to their primary caregiver, the removal home. Do you want to touch on Corrections?
Sure. We currently have 15 kids in out-of-home placement. Six of those kids are sexual offenders who are currently in either, they're in residential treatment, either inpatient sex offender treatment, or a residential treatment facility doing outpatient sex offender treatment. Five of those six have victims that are residing in the home that they cannot return to.
Do you have kind of an age range for that, those six?
I don't, but I can certainly get it for you. When I think of them, I would say they're 13 to 16.
Okay, so those teen years. You don't need to get me any more than that, but thank you.
Six of those kids are in placement due to severe and persistent, persistent mental illness. One kid is committed as mentally ill and dangerous, waiting on DHS. That juvenile has been at Northwest Juvenile Center for, it'll be a year in November. And we cannot move him. He is placed there, waiting to go to Anoka as he is under commitment as mentally ill and dangerous. Two are straight correctional kids who have absconded from multiple facilities, continue to commit aggressive or violent crimes. When they, when they go on run, they're, they're currently in correctional facilities.
Nice job, Paul.
Via the probation violations and/or new charges that they received.
And then I think we run it, so next we would bring your attention to the budget, sir, with the sheet with lots of, lots of numbers. So currently for the 2023, we are projected to come in below budget at around 600,000. We may, after knowing that we have that youth, additional youth that are sitting in detention, may be closer to 500, about a half a million under budget. As you may recall, last October, we had come before you requesting your support to have a contract with a detention facility to hold some beds. Knowing that our numbers had continued to increase, there was stress on our law enforcement, and that has been a, a good working relationship for us and for our stakeholders. And with that, we continue to see a cost in our Corrections and our detention areas. And while we do have it split out, as my example of a kid that is children's mental health, it's, there's a gray area, right? Often, our kids that have severe mental health, behavioral needs end up in detention and/or with Krista's team in Corrections. So while our Social Services placements continue with the number of kids in care, there has been a slight increase in the, in the rates. So whether that's for residential or professional foster care or just family foster care, those rates have increased. We still, though, will be under budget, if you look at just Social Services. But then overall, due to the increase of detention, so those would, those would be kids that we consider, they're not open, they're not placed under a CHIPS file. They have been placed in detention because of new charges. Law enforcement has placed them. We're not able to place a kid in detention. They, those might also be the kids that are on Corrections caseload and have a new offense and end up in detention. But then we also have kids that are open to Krista's workers that might go into residential placement. So those also are coded. They might, they might go into family foster care or professional foster care, so.
Where is detention? Where, where is, is it a facility, or what is detention?
Yeah, great question. So we have, how many facilities across the state?
I believe there's five or six across the state. We consistently use Anoka, or East Regional now, because we have that contracted bed, so not only
That's where the bed is contracted at, okay.
Right. We get the reduced rate for not only that bed, but for any other kid that we place there. So we, we get a cheaper rate there than, say, Northwest or Arrowhead or anywhere else.
Okay.
We do use Northwest occasionally. Anoka or East Regional is running full and not taking any additional kids.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we'll come in over for expenditures related to Corrections. And then, under revenue, we would like to call out, so on this page towards the bottom, we did provide you some narrative related to child support. So as you know, Crowing County, for a number of years, has been very intentional about assessing a child support and/or parental fees to parents that they're, the kids are in care. This is a case-by-case basis, so not necessarily everybody. It's a case-by-case. And so there's a number of factors that we consider. If it, if the funds for that family are necessary to reunify those kids, we're not going to assess that parental fee or child support. The state has tightened up those, the parameters for us to be able to assess a child support or a parental fee. So there's been a slight shift, that we have less cases that we may or shall be eligible to assess a child support. So there's a slight decrease in our child support recoveries. We also still consider if there's social security admin, income that's coming into the home. So if the child is certified disabled, or there's survivor benefits, we also may assess that as a fee and have that in our recoveries. We would welcome any questions that you have regarding our budget or numbers.
Mr. Chair, if I might, and Krista, I want to go back to that M-I-N-D individual that's sitting at Northwest.
Sure.
Is Northwest able to handle an M-I-N-D?
He is not receiving programming. They don't have, it's just not a facility set up, nor do they have the staff to give that kid programming that he needs.
So you said that they're waiting, we're waiting for a bed at Anoka, at the Regional Treatment Center?
Yes, we're waiting for DHS to say they have a bed for him. When I listen to Tammy, it's very similar in the juvenile world. And I, I think this next legislative session, you all are going to hear about the lack of services for juveniles across the state, particularly, particularly for those kids who are severe and persistently mentally ill.
So does Anoka Regional Treatment Center have an M-I-N-D adolescent program?
I don't believe it's an adolescent program. Tammy, Tammy's not still here.
How, will he age into the adult world?
He is already.
Oh, he is already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, so then it's not just waiting for Anoka, it's waiting for St. Peter potentially also?
Potentially, yes. I, I do believe, once he gets in there, they will take a look at his sexual behaviors as well, and he may be considered sexually dangerous at some point. He, as he entered the system, we were finding out a lot more information on him with regard to his sexual behaviors as well. So he very well could end up at the security hospital in St. Peter, yes.
And that specific youth is another example of, we had him open to children's mental health for a number of years before he entered, or what, we were able to get him certified. So we had had concerns for a number of years when he was, we were receiving evaluations. He was in and out of residential. We had him at a local corporate foster care home. We somewhat knew the track we were going down, and, and it was fortunate that we have a very close, our teams work closely together, that we were able to get him in that certification.
Did he receive the dangerous designation as an adolescent?
I believe it was around when he turned 18.
Yes.
It was at the time of, we were leading up to that, and it was 18.
Is that, that's a court, or psychiatrist has to designate that?
Yes.
Do they wait automatically until they're 18? Because I would think a D could be put on there, you know, in their teen years, they're capable of some pretty serious offenses.
Yeah. So my experience is, in the juvenile world, professionals are hesitant to give a very strong label to youth, and we need a lot of documentation. And, and especially if somebody's been in residential or in placement, and that's more controlled environment, you're not able to have that pattern or the behaviors necessary to, to really demonstrate the safety risk to, to the community. I don't know that I'm explaining it.
He also didn't receive the charges until he was older. He was really close to 18 at that time, and then received additional charges.
I just find it interesting, because we have no facility for adolescents that might achieve the D prior to becoming an adult. Nothing in the state of Minnesota that I'm aware of.
No.
Very little for adolescents to begin with, let alone.
That's correct.
And yet, there might be a need out there, and it might not be a large need. It might be five beds in the whole state of Minnesota, or some, and some specialty facility provides that type of service, because it does take a heavy staff load to care for those individuals. But it's just a gap that I see that exists out there that we're not addressing. And to your point, Cara, they are hesitant to do that. But when I've seen some of the charges that, for adults that are in M-I-N-D status, you know, when you find a screwdriver in your eyeball, that's pretty serious stuff. And that's the kind of thing that they're capable of doing and will do.
Yeah.
So, and treatment is forever for those people. I mean, it's always a controlled environment. They may go to a less restrictive setting if they're compliant with their treatment and their medications. But I don't know that they ever get out of a facility where they're being observed to make sure that they comply. So it's just a gap that I see that exists out there.
I think you're exactly right, Commissioner, in that regard, with the M-I-N-D adolescents, for sure. And, and just the severe and persistent mental illness that we're, we're seeing, I think we're fortunate that we have places like East Regional, who are now trying to, you may recall, I know you're on the board there, you may recall that there are conversations about needing more therapeutic services, more mental health services. Now, they're a juvenile detention facility, and they're trying to fill in these gaps the best that they can. So I commend you all for having the foresight to contract that bed, because we are in a position where they're taking our kids, not turning them away. They haven't turned away a single kid, whereas other counties I'm hearing aren't able to get their kids into that facility. It's not the best place for those kids, but they are doing what they can to fill in those gaps and offer those services. And those other counties are having to place out of the state. And we have not had to do that because we have this agreement with East Regional. So I can think of at least a couple of kids that likely we would not have had anywhere for, had East Regional not taken them.
I would agree. So thank you. Nothing else.
So if you could expand, when you said, he, this young man is not receiving programming, can you just expand the, what is programming? What does it entail? I mean, just so, well, for me, and then anybody that's listening, I think they probably wonder, well, what is programming?
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying?
There's much more of a mental health focus. Typically, in juvenile detention centers, they aren't mental health practitioners. They aren't therapists. There aren't psychiatrists on staff there to work with those kids. They might come in and do assessments. They might come in and do med management periodically, but they're not working with them ongoing to stabilize their mental health, to, to continue to work on coping skills and various things to just get their mental health.
That's if they're not getting programming. But if they're getting program, it's programming, it's, it's trying to maybe get them on the right medication or, or everything?
Changing their thinking. So psychotherapy, cognitive behavioral therapy, that might be individually, that might be in a group, putting, so doing social skills group, coping skills. For some of these youth, really identifying their triggers and how that they, how they're able to regulate themselves. It might be anger management, more individualized towards, towards those, those youths.
How successful does that work? I mean?
It really depends on the diagnoses. And, you know, even if you think of more severe, like personality disorders, you can be a high-functioning adult living in the community. It depends on the level of treatment that you have received, or the environment that you grew up in, and then trauma. Ultimately, these kids have had, they've been exposed to a lot of trauma in their childhood. And not saying they, they're not able to be successful, but it's a longer road. It's more treatment. It's more therapy that they're going to need. It might mean that in, as an adult, they will continue to have to seek therapy off and on, take their medications, seek support, so more of that informal supports, not us, we're paid supports. There's informal, informal supports, which would be your church groups, your AA, your, you know, your SOVER supports, your neighbors, your friends from school. That's more of that informal. So building those up so that they have more of, more protective factors for themselves.
How many age into a correction setting?
How many what?
Age into a correction setting. In other words, they age out of the juvenile setting and end up in jail.
So, Tim, are you, are you getting at like our crossover work?
I think it's Paul's question of, how successful are we at? I think it's Paul's question of how successful are we at the therapeutic interventions changing the behavior? Some, we, some don't make it. Some don't make it and so they end up aging out of the youth system, right into our adult correction system and may spend the rest of their lives there. What kind of volume is that?
I don't know the numbers, again, might depend on the, so I think of higher, there's certain behaviors, diagnoses that have higher rates of recidivism or criminal type behavior. We know the kids that are going through the child protection system, we know they are all at risk. Research shows us that they're all at risk to end up in the juvenile delinquency system and/or the adult. That is an area that, um, for years now, since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, um, we created that crossover position to, as much as possible, target those kids and prevent them from going into the corrections. So they might be at risk, risky behaviors or end up in detention and we employed a social worker, deployed a social worker to meet with those kids, to meet with those families, to keep them from going further in to the, to the, um, detention system. That had a financial benefit, we were able to decrease our detention costs, kids were in, sitting in detention for less days. Now our numbers have went back up, so into twenty twenty four, Krista and I are shifting resources to put additional, um, staffing and attention towards those kids to per, further try to impact. Tim, your question related to kids that are eighteen, nineteen, that have been part of the correction system that end up in the adult system. I'm taking.
It's really, you guys, you two got a lot of experience. I, I would trust your instinct as being pretty accurate. That's all I'm looking for. I'm not really looking for the data. What's your gut telling you?
I don't, you know, I, I would say half, maybe.
That's def, I went towards fifty percent.
I would say, half and that is nothing scientific there at all. You know, I think, yes, those, those kids who end up in the delinquency system anyway are often further down the road, particularly those kids who are in out of home placement or in detention. You know, I think it's important to note, I mean, you may recall when we were here in April, I talked about the juvenile numbers increasing. In January first of twenty twenty two, we had eighty-three kids on probation. January first of twenty twenty three, we had a hundred and fifty-five. So that's a seventy-two additional juveniles on probation. At that time, we shifted some of our work to, um, the drug court agent because we were able to redo that contract, you might recall, and that is, um, the new agent that we've asked for in twenty twenty-four. Half of that caseload will be juvenile as well, so we're doing what we can to, to shift those resources. But that being said, when you look at a hundred and fifty-five kids, fifteen of those are in out of home placement. You know, there's, there's a lot that aren't, but those are the toughest kids.
And what I would tell you is, I never hear a conversation about the cost of corrections placement. Never comes up. So we had the conversation about the mental health and the cost of that bed. The people who we can't reform are going to have institutional level costs for us for the rest of their lives. Holy macro. And so I get it, fifty percent, and I think to myself, oh crap, I wish it was higher than that.
Well, it isn't.
But the reality is, the fifty percent that don't make it are exceptionally costly to society for a long, long time. And so this is an investment that I think there actually is a return on, both financially as well as from a societal perspective. These people are available in the employment market, they're contributing in our society at whatever level they can. Some are not going to contribute a hundred percent. I know of some folks who are persistently and mentally ill, not dangerous, living in the community, they kind of tend to keep to themselves. There's some odd behaviors the neighbors will notice, but they're not causing problems. Those are the ones I think that there is a lot of human investment there and we will pay one way or we will pay another way. And the reality is, these are people we're afraid of oftentimes, um, the corrections placements in particular, the attack of a screwdriver in the eye is a pretty visceral way of talking about the nature of the clientele here. These are tough cases, tough cases, so I know fifty percent, I'd like it to be higher, but I have to keep in mind, we never talk about the cost of corrections placements, ever, ever.
Just a comment from me, I, sitting here listening to this, and every time we talk about mental health and, you know, juveniles and all this stuff, it kind of troubles me because, you know, when, when the public gives you an election certificate, I think they expect all of us to be problem solvers and to try to figure out how to solve the problems of society, all the ills of society. And every time when you guys come here and tell about this, it really troubles me because I don't know, in my mind at least, I don't know what the answer is. I'm not a everyday person looking at the jail website, but I do look at it often and I will tell you that there are people that I, I know people that are, they're on there, they're in there and then a couple of months go by and they're not in there and then they're in there again and it just, it's a constant cycle. And I know that me, as an elected official, I would like to figure out how to fix all the problems of society and I hate to fall short of that, but I don't know what the answer is on this. I see somebody in there, no names, but that went through teen challenge, I thought was successful, now they're sitting in jail, drugs. And, um, it's, it's, it makes you cry, really. But I guess we got to try to keep trying every day, I guess, you know? I know I've, I've heard Cara say, you know, I've, I've been critical and I'm, I'm still critical of everything, you know, but of somebody that, how many times we have to help somebody? And I think Cara said that, well, maybe the fortieth time is the time that does it. I don't know. I guess I'm, I'm all for second chances, you know? I guess, I guess we just got to keep trying, that's all we can do, but I appreciate your guys' work. I just wish everybody in the county knew that we're not just plowing roads, we're not just fixing, building roads, we're not just, um, providing the sheriff's department, uh, the tools that they need. This is, this county or every county is doing a lot of things, uh, a lot of work that people don't even know about, so, anyway, enough said.
You know, I would say that, you know, if we can catch them early enough, there's a better chance that you can keep them out of that. You know, I mean, if you, you know, if they're in a place, in a situation, in a home situation where it isn't good for them, that trauma that they've got, if we can catch them soon enough and hopefully get them out, then I think we'd see less of that and I think that's the key and, but that's always a tough, tough area and so, really appreciate what you guys do, it is so important. So I don't have anything else unless somebody else does?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to point out, the family programs, your child support collections, um, they just recently won an award for having the collections program of the year. They brought their average child support collections from seventy percent up past the seventy-five percent mark, um, in, I think from July of twenty-two to August of twenty-three. Really good work from that staff. And so that means that the kids in our community who have non-custodial parents are going to have the resources they need so that frankly, everybody else doesn't have to. And so it's really good that we are having parents taking care of their children a little bit more. Love hearing that, so really good work.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing the team.
And you can go on SharePoint and acknowledge that group, so.
Yes, they are on SharePoint right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have the One Watershed, One Plan Mississippi River Brainerd Watershed Update. And it looks like we have Chris Pence, but I think we also have Melissa.
Two for one today.
Good morning.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Always fun to follow those kind of conversations with, kind of a conversation sometimes, but, uh, you know.
The nuts.
It's just, it is what it is, I suppose. So, uh, what we want to talk about today is just giving you an update on the, where we're at with the One Watershed, One Plan, um, with the Mississippi River Brainerd Watershed, we're at the end of the, of the process of planning and putting everything together. And, uh, what we want to do today was just give you a quick update on, uh, just what's in the plan, just really high level, um, information, just to keep you informed on what we're doing with that and then some next steps that we'll take with that. Just do want to point out that Commissioner Barrows has done a great job of being the policy committee chair for that and I think has really done a nice job of guiding and leading that process. So it's, it is much appreciated from a staff perspective to have engaged elected officials in that, so thanks for the time you take to do that, Steve, we appreciate it.
Thank you, but you guys did all the work, so.
Yeah, I think it goes, I think it goes hand in hand quite well, so, um, I think what I'll do at this point, unless there's any questions, is to, uh, pass over to Melissa and I'll let her kind of walk, we just have a brief PowerPoint and just, uh, if there's any questions, just let us know.
We call him, we call him Mr. Mississippi now, so.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Commissioners. I'll just go ahead and go over, uh, this is the presentation we gave at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Let's see here.
Do you have to toggle for us to read?
Okay, um, so, um, just as you just talked about the Mississippi River, uh, this is the Mississippi River Brainerd Watershed. Obviously, um, we're a part of the Mississippi headwaters, which is the first four hundred miles of the river, um, and so this stretch of the river kind of starts in Aiken and goes all the way, uh, past Little Falls.
I do have a question right off the get-go. How do you know, do you, does somebody look at the topography and go, the watershed starts here and then it goes the other way? I mean, how, how do you know where the lines are?
Well, watersheds are, are kind of unique and, and there's different scales, they're kind of like those Russian T dolls, you know, you have one and it's, it keeps getting smaller and smaller inside, so you've got, this is what you see here is a picture of the upper Mississippi basin and it is based on elevations and topography and where the water flows. And then within these basins, you have these major watersheds and again, it's where the waters, it's where the water starts and ends from where it flows out into, uh, into the next watershed. Within these major watersheds and you've got, you've got subwatersheds, then you've got minor watersheds and so it's, it's a very much a stacking, but it is based on, it is really based on elevation and soil types and, and where does the water flow within the watershed?
I mean, I would think that virtually all of Minnesota is kind of like, it seems like it's all funneling to the Mississippi River, otherwise what river would it go to?
Well, so part of Minnesota goes up to the Red River, the north, and then a majority of Minnesota does drain, uh, to, uh, the Mississippi River and then you've got some, some down south. The, the interesting part of Minnesota is that we're a headwaters state, so we don't take any water in, all of our water goes out. So we, so we're at the, we're kind of at the top of that.
I would like to keep some of my water on South Long Lake, but the DNR won't let me.
Well, that's a different story, so we'd have to have that for a different name, maybe.
Just send it down south, I guess.
Um, so the partners in this process were Aiken, Crow Wing, Morrison and Todd. Some of the major cities are Aiken, Brainerd, Baxter and Little Falls. Um, we had the Soil and Water Conservation Districts and the, the county boards. So to begin this process, we started, I want to say it was maybe two thousand and twenty or so, we came to the county board as a, looking for a resolution of support for the grant application and then we came back to the, the county board once the planning dollars were available, uh, to begin a random of agreement for the planning process, which all of these partners all signed on to that. So you guys are going through a comprehensive planning process right now, so you guys are kind of familiar with the planning process. So we had the policy committee, which again, thank you, Commissioner Barrows, for your support on that, uh, that committee. So that was the elected officials, then we also had a technical advisory committee, uh, there's state agency appointments, so the state decides who gets to be on that committee. Um, and then we also had some other stakeholders from the policy committee that want, that served on that role. And then we also did some citizen advisory committees, we have lots of lake associations, so we hosted three different kind of citizen meetings throughout the planning process and then we had a steering committee, which is just basically made up of the staff, um, and trying to ensure that all the information gets to these different committees. So we started this, the first kickoff meeting in June of twenty twenty-two at Camp Ripley, um, and then we, this is kind of the, we had those three meetings with the citizen advisory committee. So just like you guys are doing in your planning process right now, you know, we're trying to, we tried to ask people, what's important to you, what are some of the priorities that you have related to the water resources? So the priority issues that kind of came out to the surface, we kind of put them in three different categories, surface water, habitat, forestry, groundwater and land, um, and then these different issues that kind of correlate with those topics. We also tried to prioritize the resources, uh, just like the county bud, or county board, uh, prioritizes their budget every year, you have lots of wants and you have lots of, you know, have-tos. We wanted to make sure that we could have a good plan and we wanted to focus down, even though we have lots of lakes, um, we wanted to try to focus on a, a smaller group of lakes so that we can have a little bit more success. So we started with three hundred and eighty-three lakes, we went down to thirty-one lakes, uh, we started with two thousand one hundred river miles and then we kind of went down to three streams within this watershed. One of the big things, uh, with this planning process and similar to what the county does is, you know, we want to see results, right? At the, at the end of this ten-year planning process, we want to be able to come back to the county board and our constituents and say, these are the things we did and this is why this, uh, watershed is better off. And so our measurable goals are, uh, protection, which we're going to measure in number of acres, uh, agricultural land management, um, acres of, uh, best management practices, phosphorus is kind of one of the things that, uh, affects the algae growth in lakes, um, and then we also want to look at the stormwater management. Right here, we have the mighty Mississippi River very close to the Crow Wing County, this building, um, and there's a lot of old antiquated infrastructure from the city of Brainerd and other cities, uh, that are directly impacting the river itself. Drinking water is really important, we have a lot of wellhead protection areas within this watershed, um, and then we're also looking at, you know, how do we keep the, the shoreline healthy so that we have the fish populations that we need and the habitat for people to be able to fish? Then we're also looking at keeping the water on the land. We all have seen some major storms in the last five years that have affected other people downstream, so how do we keep that water in place versus, uh, washing out somebody else downstream? One of the things that we talked a lot about was, um, you know, all these things kind of relate back to each other, um, and so this is kind of our way to show how we're stacking, each goal can kind of relate back and impact, uh, one of the other things. And so, uh, we kind of took, um, this is like our way of showing that we're stacking the benefits, um, and so you can see each of those kind of measurable goals has something related to it. And so, for example, sediment, our goal is to reduce sixteen dumps trucks of sediment going out of this watershed. So this is just a way to visually see that. And then within our plan, we have specific action items and specific timelines of when we're going to do that. Uh, this estimated plan cost is really a, a state requirement. This does not really mean a lot to the county, we're not going to require the county to contribute this specific money, it's just a way to show what is the current funding within this watershed for, uh, conservation and then, um, what is the potential for funding with the watershed-based implementation funding that the watershed will receive, uh, once this plan is completed and then what are some other potential funding from other partners? So we are, uh, the, the state of Minnesota has, uh, Border Water and Soil Resources has put together allocations for each watershed, um, and so our allocation for the Mississippi Brainerd Watershed is one point four million, um, which we are eligible for funding in twenty twenty-four for. Uh, so this is the timeline, so like I talked about, we started in twenty twenty-two, uh, we are Uh, we are now in the final plan. We had the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Um, and then we'll be working with the partners to finalize this plan uh, from the state perspective. And then also begin the process of how do we work together to implement that, those grant dollars? Um, we worked on a vision and a sense of place uh, for this watershed, um, as a part of this planning process. Uh, and then these are kind of the next steps. So, we are working on going to the Border Water and Solar Resources Board Meeting in December. Um, and we were going to go to a regional committee just to get their blessing first. Um, and then once that plan is approved, um, then we can, like I said, start working on trying to um, work with all the LGUs, local government units to begin that implementation process. And with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Chris. There's some, also in your packet, there was just the excerpt from the, the plan itself. Um, just to give you an example of that executive summary.
That was really fast, really quick, um, info, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a, Mr. Chair, I do have a question. So, I know you, you, okay, so trying to wrap my head around this. So, you, you come up with a plan, so if you look at it, it's, I, let's say I identify a project where there's a lot of water going in and you figure, oh, how can I put a retention pond to, you know, something like that, okay? But how do you know if you're uh, having success? Is anybody testing the water where you, you test it and you go, gee, in two thousand ten it was this and now here it is and it's getting worse or it's, or we're having success? How do you measure success?
Well, that's a good question and I'm glad you brought that up. So, one, so we, uh, the, through this process, the state has the, the RAPS process that the Pollution Control Agency does, which is the uh, watershed restoration and protection strategies where they assess every watershed every ten years. And so the idea is that you've got a, you've got a plan in place and you do projects and you do different things. And then they circle back every ten years and take, take a snapshot. Did, did anything change since they did the first review ten years ago to today? One of the ways that uh, we really, I think, um, have an advantage here in Crow Wing is that uh, we've got a really good relationship with our, with our lake associations. And so they, they voluntarily take a lot of these water samples for us so that we keep, and it's, and that's provided to the, to the PCA. And then they have a, they have a program that they, that they keep it in down there. So, we have a really good running track record of what the water quality is like in Crow Wing County. And um, based on that, you know, we get into, we can see trends. We can see, you know, how are things improving, declining, are they stable? Um, for the most part, the mo, the majority, about seventy percent of the lakes uh, in the county are, are, are pretty, are, are very stable. And then you've got uh, are stable or in, or in, or you know, or increasing. And then you've got a smaller amount that are showing some decreasing water quality trends. And so when Melissa talks about having, how do we prioritize, where do we work, that comes the big question. Do we focus on the lakes that are already in great shape and, and keep them in great shape? Or do we put money towards getting some of these lakes that have a decreasing trend and trying to get them stabilized up so that they are no longer decreasing, but more stabilized? That's the, I think that's kind of the, the, the push and pull a little bit with doing these types of projects because we can't, um, like she said, there's three hundred and eighty-three lakes in the watershed and so we can't do, we can't pick every lake because once you have no pri, if you, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. So, um, so we focus on the, on these lakes that uh, really bubble to the top when you look at different objective items that they, that they were looking at as far as what would be the lakes that would come to the top that we'd focus on, um, the energy of the plan and the, and the planning dollars.
Why is sediment an issue? What, what is the problem with sediment? I mean, I would think that sediment has been washing in there since going back to the dinosaurs.
And that's true. And sediment has been washing. What we want to do is we want to ensure that we're not doing things on landscape that increases that. So, there's, there is some natural, that's going to happen just on a natural basis. What we want to stop is, is having that be um, something that exceeds quicker than what uh, would be, would be normal. And plus, when you look at sediment, um, if you have excess sediment in, in lakes and rivers, it can um, it can cover up really good spawning beds for fish habitat. Um, there's phosphorus attached to that sediment, and so the more, the more sediment we get, the more phosphorus we get, the more phosphorus we get, more weeds, we get more algae. Uh, and so, um, sediment is one of the, one of the bigger items frankly of, of concern in the river as far as having um, water quality issues is sedimentation. And if you look at some of the projects that um, Melissa and her team have worked on, for example, um, working on the project over here in uh, in the Little Buffalo Hills neighborhood, we're reducing sediment going into the, into the Mississippi River on that project by how much?
I don't remember. I'd have to get back to you on.
It's tons. It's tons of sediment. The same project that people see going on behind Fleet Farm right now. Uh, that's another project that's reducing tons of sediment that's going into their.
Project?
The one that's going on behind Fleet Farm, so that is uh, basically there's about four hundred acres of, of uh, within the Baxter area down three seventy-one, kind of starting at Fleet Farm up to Menards and then going across three seventy-one. That all drains into that area and it's just basically untreated stormwater runoff. And what, so the money that they got from Bowser through the Clean Water Fund was to begin um, collecting and treating that water before it gets to the river. So, it doesn't, this project starts that, it doesn't finish it. There'll be, there'll have to be subsequent, you know, project to finish it up, but it's, it's a, it's a big deal. If, once that project is completed, it'll reduce the total sedimentation going into the river by about twenty-five percent. So, it, it's a big project.
I never knew, I, I never knew, you know, uh, Baxter, I thought, oh, that's just, you know, sand burrs and sand. I didn't know there's such a high water table in Baxter. When I sold some property and they built this mattress firm building, he says, uh, we'll have to start de-watering. And I said, de-watering? They actually had to put pipes down and they pumped and pumped and pumped and pumped and pumped until it was dry and then they could pour the footings. Otherwise, the footings would have been, they couldn't even have put them in. So, uh, oh shoot, I had another question too, but, and it was a real important one.
Commissioner Corning, just, just to piggyback off what you're saying. If we ever get the two-ten-three-seventy-one project done, the MinDOT project, they'll lose their um, stormwater ponds there that are alongside those two highways right now?
Yes.
That will all be directed to Whiskey Creek because we can build that capacity into that. So, this project is much bigger and has a longer-term impact in our area than, than what you're seeing right now, which is pretty drastic when you go look at the digging that's going on over there.
And it's, it's been identified as an issue for at least twenty years, just not having the funding source there to actually implement the project. Uh, so just to give you, maybe just to frame this a little bit too, so the county currently has a water plan. That's a county-based water plan that was adopted back in two thousand thirteen and it went through the year two thousand twenty-three through this year. So, we got an extension from, from uh, the Board of Water and Solar Resources to give us time to adopt county, uh, to adopt this more watershed-based water planning within the county. So, we've already got the Pine River is done on the north side up by Whitefish. Then down on the southeast corner, the Rum River component is done. You were part of that, Commissioner Corning. And then, you know, Commissioner Lubke, you're part of the Pine River Planning. And so once this is done, the last watershed we have is the Crow Wing, which is over on the west side, which is the Gull and North Long, Rowan, Hubert, part of the, part of the county. And so, um, Melissa and her team um, are already working on that with a bunch of county. That's a big watershed. There's a lot of involvement. And Commissioner Lubke, you're involved in that one too. So, we appreciate the support um, from the county board on, on helping us to shepherd through that process. So, just a point to remember that the dollars that are used for both planning and implementation come with the Clean Water Fund. And that's the, uh, when we agreed back in two thousand eight, we voted to increase the sales tax by three eighths of one percent. And so a third of the money went into habitat dollars, which is our Lissard sand money that we get for, you know, for land acquisition, for easements. A third of the money went into the Clean Water Fund, which is used for what we're talking about today as far as water planning and um, projects. Um, and, and all those come from the Clean Water Fund. And then uh, part of the money went into parks and trails and the arts. Uh, and so it's what we're talking about today is that money coming in. The nice part about this is that uh, we've always had planning, water plans in the county, but there hasn't been consistent funding to it. This will have consistent funding. So, every two years, you're gonna, there'll be a one point four million dollars coming into the watershed, not to Crow Wing County, but to the watershed as a whole. And then once we agree on our implementation plan with the other counties and SWCDs, we'll put together work plans and decide where does that money get spent in those years and, and what are the top projects and priorities within the watershed?
So, back to this other project over here, so, so I would assume that somebody, I thought the Good Samaritan Society owned that property. Did, did, did they have to sell part of that property? And, and this is, in, in essence, it's a giant retention pond where the, the water goes there and then, then it kind of hopefully filters down some and then moves on. Is that correct?
That's exactly it. Yep.
So, under, uh, or I guess, Mr. Chair, under Fleet Farm, there's a pipe that goes directly from Fleet Farm to that uh, underneath, and what is it? It's, is that aisle?
Gulf Course Drive.
Gulf Course Drive, yeah. And so that water is, like you said, it kind of starts all the way up by almost three seventy and seventy-seven. There's all these different ditches and pipes and that whole area was built before the city of Baxter was required to do some stormwater treatment. And then the Whiskey Creek eventually goes into the Arboretum. So, the Arboretum has had some issues with their property due to the flows and then also all the stuff that came through that system.
And then Melissa, where does it go, once it leaves that giant pond, if it, if there is any water that leaves the pond, where does it eventually? Where's the ex, exit?
Um, the exit is actually on Riverside Drive, kind of by the Civic Center. Is, there's another pipe underneath the road that goes to the, the river itself.
Oh, okay, because I, for some reason, I thought it was going west, but it's coming back this way.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not a specific DNR public waters. Um, so, but it is a, I guess, um, actually Tim Terrell uh, found this, but it, what, that system was actually built for um, for the mill basically to push logs down that system. Um, and so that system got left, um, and it was still carrying water to the Mississippi River. Um, but it's not a specific public water.
Sounds like it's headed right towards Renee's house and her basement, no?
Clean, clean water, clean water, right?
Clean water, clean water.
Uh, so what we've got on the screen here is just a resolution um, that we'd like to bring back to the board uh, next Tuesday. Uh, this would basically um, recommend that the plan go to the regional committee and that uh, once it was, once the plan's approved by uh, the Board of Water and Solar Resources at their meeting in December, that then you would adopt the plan as your local water plan for this part of the county. And so it's kind of a two, a two-step, um, two-step resolution. So, we don't have to come back a second time and ask you to adopt the plan. So, this adopts the plan if Bowser approves the plan um, down in St. Paul. So, the question that I have for you is, uh, we'd, we'd like to bring it back next Tuesday. Uh, is this something you'd like another presentation to the, to the board? Do you like this to be on consent or what would, what would be the?
Consent.
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 All right.
Just a point of interest, I have to tell you that, that that stormwater sewer runs right under the floor of Mills Fleet Farm there.
Really?
They engineered that. It's just the craziest thing because if that ever fails, you'll see the middle of Mills Fleet Farm go down with it.
You know, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Little Pine one as a, as a, just an advisory up there. And, and I always thought like, we've got water laying around, let's get it down in the lakes, let's get it down on the rivers. I didn't realize until I started serving on that board how important it is to have those, whether you call it rain gardens or areas where that water can percolate, where that sediment can stay and how important it is to the quality of the lakes. Um, the things that I think you guys look at doing, and, and I come from the automotive background, you don't have to maintenance your vehicle if you don't want to, you know, and that's a look at these lakes. You don't have to maintenance as long as you got a checkbook to repair them. And God doesn't have a big enough checkbook to repair the lakes we have in here. So, I really appreciate everything you guys are doing in regards to the maintenance of these lakes because that's why people are here. So, thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, that is all we have on the agenda for you today. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, I guess Commissioner Franklin is still online as well, so any questions from any of you?
Just, just.
None from me.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
Just for you, Mr. County Administrator, we uh, uh, we had a little brief conversation before the meeting started to Mark. I don't know, you're, you're working uh, to try to get that, the issue of the airport tax. I know there, there's, we've got probably several ideas and.
I think there are a number of ways to resolve the issue and I think that's what we're exploring is, what would be the preferred alternative for the parties? And so, um, we received the formal request from the city last, I think it was Wednesday. Uh, and so I reached out to Jennifer and just trying to explore, what are the options that the city council is, is seeking here? What, what do they want to have happen? Um, and offered, I think, a number of alternatives back to her.
Right.
So that she could take them back to the city council to float it, to resolve it. I believe there will be an amicable settlement here. I think there's lots of different ways to solve this. It's really just a question of how. How would all the parties like to proceed? So, I think there is an amicable solution moving forward.
But we did put it, I did ask Rosemary or the chair to put it on the agenda for the next committee, the whole next month on the fourteenth. But if it's resolved by then, then.
Better yet.
It'd just be a report to us then.
All right.
And you know, I, I certainly have an understanding of where you guys are at in terms of the options that you would be willing to consider. And I trust Jennifer will do the same. And when we compare notes, we'll tell you both what we think are the possibilities for you guys.
Okay.
All good options and choices, so.
Do we adjourn this meeting then?
Can I just make one clarification? It's November twenty-first, not the fourteenth.
Well, what, well, what did I, why am I thinking, what's on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth is the county board meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the HRA.
That's the HRA meeting. Okay, that's why I got that in my head. So, we do have a county board meeting that day and then we're having a joint meeting with the HRA at five o'clock on the fourteenth.
I don't have that agenda finalized yet, um, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, unless there are any other questions?
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, we don't really make motions during committee hall.
Good, good. Can we just say goodbye?